Good evening. Well, up to the Planning Board meeting of April 16th, 2019. These meetings are recorded. That'll open the meeting and motion to approve our previous meeting minutes. Motion by John, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Lena. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at five. This is our annual reorganization meeting. So with that, I will open up the, take a motion for the positions. Actually, I will take a motion for chairman and...
Make a motion for Babe.
Motion by Pat to nominate Babe as chairman for the coming year. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lena or any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Babe as the chairman will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at five. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Minetti to carry on the meeting.
Okay. The nominations for vice chairman?
I'll nominate Lena. Second.
Moved in second, I'll nominate Lena. Any other further nominations? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They got nomination for the clerk?
Karen Jackson.
Second.
Moved in second. And any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. For the MAPC swap representative?
I nominate Joe.
Second.
It's been moved in, uh, thing, does it, yeah, moved in second. Does it, is there any other nominations?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Fair Housing Committee Representative?
I nominate Lena.
You're gonna second that, babe?
Second. Want to second it yourself, Lena? You can do that.
No.
You're excited, Lena?
I cannot wait for this meeting.
Got it, girl.
It's moved in second. Any other nominations?
I think Lena would get mad at you if anyone else...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. For the Open Space Advisory Committee?
I nominate Joe.
Who was that?
Joe.
Oh. I'll second that.
Moved in second. And any other nominations? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, for the authorization for the clerk and the town planner to sign correspondence for the chairman?
Motion. Second.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Pat. How, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, opposed? Unanimous. Authorize the clerk and the town planner to sign the planning board meetings postings with the town clerk?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Authorize the town planner to sign our 81p plans and site plans after the board approval.
Motion. Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Authorize the town planner to sign the planning board payroll.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second.
It's the most important one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Authorize the town planner to call the planning board meetings and set public hearings.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And last, authorize the town planner to set the planning board agenda.
Motion. Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
Okay.
This is his use.
We're going to 81ps. We have none?
Nope.
Public meeting.
Oh, we have a public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I looked down to number one, not that. A public hearing for the zoning, uh, sign regulations on the zoning bylaws. Who has the, we got the reading, Larry?
Karen's not here.
Yeah.
Notice, public hearing on Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, in room three of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. Milford Planning Board will, at the times designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. 7:02 PM, application of the planning board to amend section 3.9 sign regulations of the zoning bylaw to provide for projecting signs within the OR, BP, CA, CB, CC, IA, IB, and IC zoning districts. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. Interested parties may express their views at the above scheduled hearings. This legal notice ran in the Milford Daily News on 4/2 and 4/9 of this year.
Okay. Larry, you want to go over the article?
Just one.
Yeah, the, uh, the proposal to provide for, um, projecting signs should be Article 21 in the warrant. The text is included in your packet. There are three primary sections. The first is to add a definition of projecting signs, which would be any sign affixed perpendicular to a building or wall in such a manner that its leading edge extends no more than six inches beyond the surface of such building or wall.
More than, Larry, not no than?
More, extends more than six inches, yeah. The other two sections, the first one is actually under the exemption sections because it deals with projecting signs. Would be accepted to include, to intrude into the public right of way if authorized by special permit of the planning board, provided that the signs don't exceed nine square feet in area and shall maintain a minimum unobstructed vertical clearance above sidewalks at 10 feet. And then the third section is the primary area of permitted signs, which would allow the projecting signs in those districts that we noted before, the non-residential zones. And again, the area would be not to exceed nine square feet. They'd have to be 10 feet above sidewalks, driveways, or parking areas and shall project no more than four feet from the building on which it's mounted. The, uh, it come to the planning board's attention that several of the downtown facade improvement grant applicants were interested in replacing signage that included projecting signs. The most recent update of the sign regulations made no provisions for projecting signs. So to remedy that, we've developed this bylaw to provide for them in a limited way in non-residential districts.
Any of the planning board members have any questions?
Just one quick, babe. In terms of, specific to the downtown, am I to conclude that through the, I know it's through special permit through the planning board, but might I conclude through the building department, they're gonna need to get the sign off from the selectmen at that point? How does that work? Because if you portray, if, if the sign's going over public, um, the public sidewalk, does, do the selectmen have to sign off?
I, yeah, I believe the processes, we would approve it. They'd have to go to the selectmen to get it before the building department could issue a building permit for it because...
Does that need to be spelled out or not? I'm just curious about that.
They'd get a license from the selectmen if it's, if it's over.
But we don't need to spell that out in this?
No.
I just don't want to, I don't want it to go, get slipped through the cracks, so to speak, and then...
Right. That's a good, that's a good point.
I had asked that when we first went through it and the, and the mechanism that they, again, it'll be through the building department. The building department shouldn't be granting any unless they have the license agreement from the town.
That's why I was curious if it should be spelled out. And the only other, the only other thing that I had mentioned when we first talked about this was that it'd have some sort of guide wire attached to it so that if it were to come...
It would hang.
It, it wouldn't fall into the public right of way. And again, I think you said that was also...
I believe the code is, I believe the code is, yeah, and I believe the code covers that.
And we don't have to...
Building.
There's no caveat in here. There's no discussion points in there whether it'd be illuminated or not illuminated. And then, obviously, it brings the next question, is if it's gonna be sticking out, then, you know...
Be illuminated?
Well, yeah, is it gonna, you know, are they then gonna ask to put floodlights in? But that doesn't calculate into the sign, the square footage of the sign, correct? Because lighting would be totally different.
Yeah, the sign, the...
The illumination would be on the building itself and...
I don't know.
You bring up a couple of good points.
Well, I mean, I guess that's part, that's part of ours when, when they come back, if we have an issue with that at all because it's special permit anyway, so we can...
It could be internally illuminated. It could be an electronic message panel. The, the main reason for the amendment is that whatever type of illumination it has, the structural type as projecting sign would have, would have to be...
I guess my main focus was more or less the, the whole sign off from the selectmen, whether it needed to be spelt out or not. But if you're telling me that through the building department, I just, I don't have any objections to this at all. And I look forward to it. I just, sometimes through the building department, things don't always... And I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing, but I didn't want to miss something so basic as to instill that there had to be sign off from the selectmen, that's all.
Well, I guess, I mean, this board doesn't have the right to, to provide that easement. So if somebody, at the end of the day, if somebody goes and takes odds and the building department gives them a permit, the selectmen have the right to tell them to take it down because they have no right to put the property in that.
It's gonna be part of our special permitting process to, to advise them that they have to, still have to get the, okay, get the permission from the...
Good point, though, Pat. That's a good point.
This being a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who's got any, uh, like to discuss this? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion. We, we close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Second.
It's been moved in second. Do we close the public hearing and send the...
Favorable.
Favorable to the, uh, to the town meeting? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll go to the first one, which is, Joe, I imagine you're...
Both are oil.
Both are oil, yes.
Good evening. This is a request to amend the site plan to allow for the installation of a propane tank storage area on the, if you were looking at the building, on the right side of the building. The fire chief has made a comment that my client will, asked me to address. The fire chief's comment about the proposed location that was in an area where employees were smoking, which is outside the patio. And when it was brought to the attention of my client that people were smoking in that area, he immediately has put in a policy at the facility that there'd be no smoking allowed on the patio area for two reasons. One, because he respects the fire chief's opinion on that. And secondly, because it's actually designed to be an area for eating. And smoking is not allowed, as you know, in eating areas. So we would ask that the site plan as presented be approved. And again, we recognize the fire chief's comments and have taken heed to them already. And a stipulation that that occur would not be an issue. Also, I believe that the town planner is recommending the installation of bollards or some other kind of protection around that area. And those two will be installed per whatever requirements this board seems to, deems to be suitable for the site.
Can I read the letter?
Just out of quick curiosity, Joe, and I respect what you said in terms of if it was a patio designed for eating, then you are correct, smoking shouldn't occur there. But is he making provisions for his employees to have an alternative area for them?
Yes, they're going to have to smoke in their own cars.
Just don't park near the, uh, just don't park, I don't know where employee parking is, so...
To the propane tanks.
Okay, good.
But they're going to be required to smoke in their own cars. And there are only a few that smoke anyway.
I'm not asking for a headcount. I was just curious.
No, he's already taken measures on that.
Okay. Don't smoke when the tanker truck comes out.
Right, oh, exactly.
They're gonna have a cage all around that anyway. And then they're gonna have the, um, what, the, um...
The typical signs don't let the sun...
Typical signs in the bollards.
Bollards or Jersey barriers.
The bollards, and will be the barriers on each side.
Yeah, we projected bollards would be the appropriate.
Yeah, I think bollards would be fine.
Bollards between the sidewalk and the area, as well as around the cages.
Wherever the board determines, that's not a problem.
Larry is, uh...
Okay.
Gave us a favorable on this, providing that the bollards be put in east and west on the south perimeter of the cage. Should be, that's, the no smoking is something the planning department's gonna do.
Just to follow up, my client has already forwarded an email back to Deputy Chief Nelson indicating that concrete barriers will be placed next to the propane exchange cage and additional protection to serve as additional protection. The cage is to be located 20 feet away from vehicle movements. And the outdoor seating area is non-smoking area and will be designated as such. So again, we've already addressed that.
Will there be signs there, Joe, that says no smoking?
No smoking, yes.
Okay.
Be designated, no smoking there.
Okay, all right.
Shouldn't be smoking there because it's, it's designed for food consumption, so it's a good catch.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I would just, I would, I would think the bollards maybe six feet on center or something.
Yes, and six inch, six inch bollards.
Six inch bollards. And the two sides that Larry indicated, the south side and west side.
Right.
I'll make a motion to amend the site plan.
I'll second that, Patrick.
Did you hear that?
Babe, I mean, I'm sorry, did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Saying it softly because you took it heavy. I'm sorry.
No, I did. I was just, uh...
Subject to the, uh, the installation of the, yeah.
I was just looking at the...
Map.
The plan. It's been moved in second. And do we approve the amended site plan? Any further discussion?
With the provisions for the...
With the provisions, yes.
Thank you.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Unanimous.
Good night.
I'll walk back later.
Oh, I can't wait.
Okay, the next one is the amended site plan for One National Street.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason McCleavy. I work for a company called...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
That does just...
You gotta talk louder. That's, that's, no, that's for TV. That's for the camera. It's not, it's not like...
For those at home, you just need to speak louder for us.
Oh, all right.
My name is Jason McCleavy. I, I work for a Dacon PDA, the design-build company who is contracted to, um, provide some work to the One National Street property, representing the owner of the property.
Spell your last name?
So just a brief overview of what's happening to the property. It was formerly a glass bottling plant, which was factory industrial slash warehouse use. The new owner is converting the building to strictly warehouse use, hence the addition of a second set of loading docks. He'd like to have the ability to have a two-tenant setup, uh, opposed to one tenant for the entire building. It's a rather large building. So the work is set up in a couple of layers. The first layer that's been initiated but not completed is the demolition of the furnace, smelting, uh, glass, melting portion of the building. So that is, is to be torn down. There was an order conditions, uh, accepted. That portion of the building is not in this site plan review. This portion of the, of the work is to the main building, which is remaining, and incorporates adding the loading docks, changing the use of the building to warehouse.
Could you point this all out to me? Could you stand up and point it out, please?
So this small portion of the building, the entire building is about 320,000 square feet. This portion of the building is the furnace building.
Right.
Okay, so this portion of the building highlighted is to be demolished. This portion of the building is to remain. All right, so this is intended to be separated into possibly two tenant spaces. There's existing loading docks, this location, new loading docks in this location, current parking lot. That area is to remain the same with reconfiguration, to create the ability for trucks to access the new loading docks. And then we reconfigured the parking for vehicles, same number of parking spaces as existing, just reconfigured to a new layout.
Actually adding, like, four jigs?
Yeah, actually, we, yeah, there's, there's a couple extra. So we're... With a new handicap parking space.
So there'll be no parking on National Street? On the street itself? Okay.
No, yeah, we're, we're not proposing. That would be...
There used to be parking there. That's why I'm asking. People pa- parked their trucks?
Yes, without any type of approval.
Correct, correct.
They just use the road.
Okay.
So we're only sticking with, within the property boundaries for our application. We're not addressing anything that may happen.
Okay, thank you.
Not legally, so to speak. So, um, where was I? Right, so one of the concerns in the, um, was it from, Mr. Duncan, I believe, and from the town engineer also, was that the order conditions was not addressed in this application. That will be addressed. There will be another application to determine what happens with this portion of the property. Once this is torn down, there's a basement level that's 12 feet deep. That will need to be filled. Something will need to be done with it. That requires some engineering work, um, uh, uh, drainwater runoff.
Water quality.
Water quality. There'll be some issues that have to be dealt with. That process is underway but not completed yet. So we were trying to get this portion of the building, which was more straightforward than this portion of the building at this time. Another application will follow for that.
Both the order conditions and for site plan?
Correct.
Both what?
I live down by there. Are you kidding me?
Correct, just that, that's just the reason why it wasn't included here. I mean, you will see a full application for that. There was also concern for homing of parking. We've developed just today, Meridian is our sibling unit for the project, so we looked at turning radii of trucks, get in and out, and avoid the vehicle parking. So if that's something you'd like to see, we could show you some diagrams to show how the truck traffic won't be anywhere near the vehicle parking spaces in a, for safety or for any other reason. And then there was a question about hydrant locations, one hydrant being removed. There are no fire hydrants being removed under this plan.
Okay.
If, if we didn't explain or we had a note that was, uh, not easy to understand, we apologize for that. But there would be no change to the fire hydrant location. We are installing a new sprinkler system, fire protection system in the building, but doesn't affect anything that is outside.
All right. That's not noted on the plan, the new sprinkler system?
Uh, that will be part of the building permit process that we'll go through with the fire marshal. We've talked to the fire marshal about it. As far as I'm concerned, that, as far as I understand, that's...
Well, I guess the issue, regardless of the fact of whether you're, you're moving or not moving a hydrant, I mean, I think, I think the, the chief is asking that he wants to, it's also his, his, his turn to look at it again if he wanted to move it or not. And I don't believe he can, he could clearly tell whether what was there now is what he'd want now based on, based on the previous use or based on your use as a warehouse. So I, you know, I, in, in deference to his statement, I mean, I thi- I think we need to give him a plan that clearly indicates where the hydrants are, including the signage connection on the building, for him to review and, and send a final comment back to us.
And whether they're gonna be moved or not.
Well, according to them, they're not, which is fine. But I, but I just want to make sure that, that he sees clearly where they are. And if he says, if he does want to move one, I'd, I'd like him to be able to make that comment.
Right.
We have existing documents from the building that show the hydrant layout. So we can provide...
Well, the plan needs to clearly show it. It's, it's not legible enough to tell where it is from what the chief's concern was.
Well, there, there are hydrants located around the entire perimeter of the building.
Right.
So there are a lot of them.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, on the site plan, you need to make sure that those are clearly delineated. No ones to go right.
That's one of the things we require on our site plan is the location of the hydrants.
And they are on the plan. You know, there's, there's six icons on the plan or so, and none of them are being proposed to be relocated. So we are having to realign a portion of the water line with the loading docks are being cut in. With a great change, we'll go, we'll be lowered there to have a full, full four-foot dock. We have to lower the water line in that location. And it's between a portion of the, of the, of the existing water loop that is between hydrants. So we are not proposing to alter any of the hydrants on site.
Is that a proposal from the water company?
No, they have to because of the loading docks.
The, uh, going from, say, a five-foot cover on the water pipe now to only one-foot. So the pipe has to be lowered to prevent...
Okay.
What about the parking space with, uh, located immediately next to the parking, the hydrant?
Right, so let me just, two more.
Did you realign this parking?
Let me just use this plan to show you. So we're talking about this location right here?
I'm just, I'm just reading the comment, yeah.
Right, so there, there is a fire hydrant located, uh, close to this first parking space. The parking space doesn't block the fire hydrant. It's nearly adjacent to it. And currently, this is, this is trailer storage. And the trailers are 52 feet long. We're only proposing a 20-foot parking space now. So it's, I think it's an improvement from the previous.
Well, the fact that it's trailer storage may not have been trailer storage when those were originally put in. So I don't know what was there on the original site plan. I mean, what, what people do now or not, or, but...
Well, one way to address the, the chief's comment about that particular location would be to just eliminate that parking space.
Yeah, I mean, we have more parking spaces than we...
Right.
Than exist.
Right, you picked up a couple of other places.
We could simply strike that off and eliminate that as a parking space.
I, I would, I mean, I would, I would just go through with the chief. If he knows the location, it may not be an issue. I, I, you know, for whatever reason, I believe he had a tough time figuring exactly where they were. If, if you pointed out to him as to what's there, he may not have any issue with it and he can leave the parking spot. I, I mean, I, I, I had a brief conversation with, with the chief or, or whoever wrote, who was, uh...
I believe it's a lieutenant.
Nelson, yeah, Lieutenant Nelson usually does the reviews.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief.
Oh, deputy chief.
That, that may be all you need. But we, we just, I mean, this board needs to make sure that, that they are comfortable with whatever it is. So we just, you know, whatever, I don't think it's, I don't think it's much, much push on your end to, to do anything. You just need to make sure that he's clear with what's out there.
Yeah, we can easily accommodate that.
We, uh, have to do that as a condition of approval. If you thought that was appropriate.
If the board is willing.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, you wanna replay, you wanna relocate the water service, the domestic?
Or the fire loop around the building? The domestic water service, sanitary, nothing is changing relative to that. It's just the water loop along the loading dock area.
Can I, well?
Right, there was a note from the water department to address moving.
That's there.
Water meter must be located into the building on the domestic.
I, I'm sorry, yeah, the meter, I, I document the service itself.
Right, if that's a, if that's a condition that they require, it would be done.
Oh, it's, okay, it's outside the building.
Yeah, it's outside.
Okay. And the sewer service is not going to be disturbed at all?
You want to read the letter at all?
From the town engineer, uh, again, was about the demolition, which you, you're gonna come back on. And he...
I believe Mike Dean was, might have been confused by a note that we have in the plan just referring to the previous order conditions. So I believe in the submission requirements, just talked about other permitting. And, uh, so we did mention the previous order conditions, but it was for demolition only. It was not for any new work on the, on the east end of the building. That would definitely be a, this, this, this site plan set was not intended to propose any new work on the east end of the site.
And you do have the proposed traffic plan for truck traffic and parking space?
I'd be happy to distribute those if the board...
Has Mike, has Mike seen these?
No, we just prepared these this afternoon.
Okay.
Before we move on, that last point about the note on the plan of the order... Before we move on, that last point about the note on the plan of the, um, order conditions, our concern was that the plan as submitted didn't address how they were gonna handle, uh, the area once the furnaces were demolished, uh, and how the basement was gonna be filled or not, or what was gonna happen, was it gonna be paved or just grassed over? So the reference to the Concom order of conditions was a little misleading, because the way it appro- appeared on the plan, it was like, well, well, it's all taken care of, well, it wasn't taken care of at all, the Concom, so that's why I wanted them to be able to explain to the board what's happening and that they expect to come back to both boards.
Well, we understand that this, this is, this amendment is strictly for the main part of the building, not the dem- not the demolition and all that, yes.
And Mr. Duncan, it was not intended to be misleading at all.
Okay.
Well, I didn't say it was intended to, I said it was.
Well, as we, okay, fair enough, as we said in the order conditions, uh, in the notice of intent for that, the, the building's gonna be demolished.
Well, I know what you said in the order conditions, my point was, the way it appeared on the plan, if, if we didn't know better, we would assume that, oh, well, that's all taken care of, when in fact, it hadn't been, and so that's, that's, we want to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah.
You're coming back to the boards.
Okay, well, how do we? I, I, I guess I, I'm somewhat confused, how do, how do we have any control over when, if they come back to do that? I mean, it's all nice and well that somebody says we're gonna come back, but what's, what's this board's?
Well, as soon as they, as soon as they tear it down, they're gonna have to address it.
They have to, they have to come before us before they tear it down.
They should have come before us before they tore it down, it's on the approved site plan.
It's, it's being torn down to the foundations, and the demolition debris is gonna be removed from the site. What could be reused and crushed as film material on site will be stockpiled next to the, uh, air products building. All that was approved by the, uh, as part of the order conditions.
Yeah, but, oh, but that doesn't get to my point, you have an approved site plan that shows that building. You can't just go and make a change to that approved site plan at all, you should have been to this board first.
For demolition?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
It changes your site plan, it changes the approved site plan.
To remove a building down to its foundation.
It changes the approved site plan, your, your, what you showed is the outline of the building is now changed. Your drainage is gonna change, everything that we did changes, you shouldn't have done it until you came to this board. You shouldn't have been able to do this.
Now that it's showing on this plan, uh, a condition of approval of this plan would be that they immediately come back with.
That's right, that's our only, that's our only hook at this point, considering they've already done the work.
Well, it hasn't, hasn't come down yet, it hasn't.
No.
They, they haven't taken it down actually.
Again, you, you have, have you been issued a permit to tear it, to demol-? Okay, Larry, you're gonna make sure that Matt knows.
Yep, he's probably watching.
Yeah, because, again, that's, any change, any change in the site plan has to come be, this amendment has to come before us.
I mean, we're especially, eh, this, this site, maybe not as much, but if you look at other sites, that, you know, depending on how you grade that out or not, becomes critical to us in terms of where the, where the drainage goes and how it's controlled and stuff, so.
So we will regrading of that area, it's, it's not proposed right now, the, the, the building structures are being removed down to the foundations.
That's why.
At some point, you're gonna have.
At some point, and we will come before the board to get that approved, we have to go before the town engineer to get all the drainage worked at, looked at, and they're trying to get this improvement done to the building to, you know, get work progressed and get retenanting, while we figure out what's proposed to be done in the north, uh, the east end of the building.
Well, you say you're not gonna regrade, but you automatically regrade if you take that down to the foundation, there's gotta be roof leaders that are leading to somewhere now that the drainage goes somewhere.
There'll be a cellar hole with the foundation that sticks above grade, so if anything, the water will go into the cellar hole.
Again, that's the conservation that is at the word, cognizance of the sensitivity of the area with the wetlands.
As are we.
So.
So is it my understanding that you took all this down without a permit?
It's not down, it's not down yet.
It's not down yet, it's not down yet.
We have a approval from the conservation commission to do it, but there's been no demolition permit issued yet.
Okay, so that's your next step, correct?
For, for the demolition, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion from the board? Again, where Mike hasn't looked, seen these, seen the, uh, traffic, uh, truck traffic, uh, thing, I mean, let's see.
I'd prefer to continue to the next meeting, given the opportunity to let Mike review it, as well as have the fire chief understand in terms of the fire, uh, the, uh, oh, geez, now I'm drawing a blank, the, uh.
Hydrant.
Fire hydrant, thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to see a plan with the hydrants on.
May seventh.
Uh, not, uh, the traffic pattern put down and, uh, approved by, uh.
Yeah, regrettably, you just dropped them off now and again, I, the, we don't have the benefit of the town engineer's eyes.
We just received the comments this afternoon, so.
Again, that's fine. So, I would prefer to continue to May seventh.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, is that a motion?
One second.
Larry, did you get incoming?
Make a motion, continue, continue this until May seventh.
Larry, a timeframe on this, we, uh, time cognizance, uh.
It's two weeks.
No, okay. Okay, I just didn't know when they, when they came in.
Want to keep those for.
Uh, it's removed in second, and do we continue this until, uh, May seventh?
Yes.
Yes.
I would, I would, I would also suggest that if you can, you may not be complete with your design of the demolition area, but if you have more information as to what you think that may or may not look like and what you're gonna do, it would be helpful. Yes. Yeah, because I, I think, at, at the end of the day, our, our, our approval of this contingency or, or, or to, to close out at the end, I mean, we can approve what's on here to allow you to do the work, but, but to me, I wanna make sure that that, that demolition is done properly, and the only way that I'm gonna have a, a hook into that is to tie your final approvals, not approval of this, but your final occupancy of this to that work. So, the sooner you can get that stuff back into us, the cleaner it'll be for us.
I got the impression that you were already starting work to go back to Concom, uh, to amend the order of conditions about the, you know, the demolition part of it.
The, there has been some, some talk, Mr. Duncan, about, uh, you know, paving that area, using it for trailer storage, but we realized that we've gone from roof area to, to surface pavement, that involves water quality improvements and things like that, the stormwater, we, we know all that, talking to Mike.
Yeah.
And, but we weren't prepared to show that on this plan yet, so that's why we just wanted to get this work done, knowing that we were coming back to the board, to conservation, at the appropriate time for the proposed work on the east end.
So, is May seventh too tight for you, do you wanna move it up another two weeks, or?
No.
No, okay.
We'd like to, um.
They wanted to get it done tonight.
We don't wanna move it further out in May, no.
Okay.
No.
I just wanted to know, that would it be a help?
I think maybe we could clarify in the plan what the, um, speak to that east, east end of the, uh, of the site a little better.
Yeah, an interim, you know, at least explain what the interim condition is gonna be in that area.
Saying that the, the buildings will remain standing until, uh.
Well, there'll be, the foundations will, the.
The buildings.
Well, that means they can't get a demolition permit.
Right. Till you come, you wanna, you want this to be part of the demolition, the demolition to be part of this plan?
There is, there's a lot of equipment mobilized on the site right now for several weeks now, waiting to get the demo permit, 'cause that's the first course of action.
I understand, but you first addressed the fact that this wasn't gonna be touched, and now you wanna demo it, and.
I, 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 with all due respect, I did not say it's not gonna be touched, you said it's gonna be demolished down to the foundations, as.
It's almost as if they're repurposing it, babe.
Yeah, so they need to address what they're gonna do with the area once the demo takes place.
I'm not convinced that he's getting rid of the structure other than what's existing there, doesn't mean he's gonna eliminate it entirely. He's not saying he is and he's not saying he isn't, and I don't know what you're doing, I really don't care at this point, I'm just saying.
But the plan could address what it's gonna be in the interim.
I, I think, I, I think, I think he has a sense of what we're looking for, again, it's entirely up to him. If, if, if he's not taking what, what was told to him, and it gets delayed again, that, that's the peril of what's gonna happen, so. I think he has a full appreciation of where we are.
We will work with Mr. Duncan and Mr. Dean.
Uh, Joseph Antonakis, I, I represent the applicant, was not asked tonight for the purpose of the site plan review, but I'm very involved with the demolition permit, and I would just like to point out to the board that this is not anything that's new, relative to conversation that's gone on in the town of Milford. At the request of the Board of Selectmen, I held a public meeting of, and sent notice to the abuddies not within three hundred feet, but within six hundred feet, and notified them all that there would be a series of very noisy days coming in the very near future, relative to the demolition of what is basically the blast furnace, which is not necessarily a building. My client has invested significant amounts of money in getting someone ready to take it down. The process in getting to this point has been very difficult because there's a high-pressure gas line that feeds the building that could only be shut off by the gas company, and I think we all know what they're like to get done. They also had to be done, is the oxygen building had to be, um, eliminated of all oxygen, and we're in the process of getting certifications of that now, so my question is, 'cause I'm, I'm listening intently in the background, are you conditioning the, the demolition of that structure on coming back? Because if you, I have to tell my client immediately, because there are people coming to take that building down, and there, and there's significant mobilization expenses in this. The structure that's coming down, the air handling structure, is of high value, it's got tremendous, um, uh, scrap value, beyond scrap value, and again, there are specially trained people coming to do this, waiting a demolition permit. So if you're gonna hold it up till May seventh, or May eighth, the day after, I'd like to be able to report that to my client, I'm not sure that that's what you wanna do.
No, I don't have that issue, 'cause I don't have any issue with the building coming down in and of itself, I have more of an issue of what, what happens afterwards. So as long as there's work going on, I'll trust them to, to come back, knowing that, that.
Thank you.
That's why I want, that's why I wanna make sure in two weeks, I know what that's gonna look like at the end of the days, but.
You will on this plan, then, because I, again, I just wanted to make sure we have people coming that are being mobilized.
Yeah, because from, from both what Mike had said and what I'd said in our reports, was based on an understanding of generally what was supposed to be happening. Our problem was, this plan doesn't address it, and the closest you get to addressing it is a reference to an order of conditions that also doesn't address it, so we want it addressed. If it's a simple statement or two in the notes as to what the condition of that area is gonna be for an interim period, how hard is that? That could have been on the plan now and we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Well, it'll be on the plan on May seventh, and, and we'll go forward, and again, we went to the Conservation Commission to identify the areas and the setbacks, et cetera, that's all been codified and ready to go.
But if, but if it can be placed on the plan in that manner, then, uh, that might satisfy the board to the extent of being able to have that as a condition of approval tonight, so that however long it takes them to get it on the plan, on the Mylar and bring it back, then I can sign it. Mike and I will review it, and we'll sign it, as long as we feel it meets what you expect the note to say as a condition of approval, and then there isn't a continuance necessary.
Well, let's put it this way, I, I don't.
Of course, then you'd have to.
I mean, if they're able to get the demolition permit regardless, I, I mean, I don't really, if they come back in two weeks with, with the plan, I don't know, I don't know what, what, what exactly I wanted to say, what, what it's gonna look like, per se. So it's tough for me to tell you if it's gonna, if we're comfortable that it's okay or not, so if they're.
Fair enough.
You know, I, I.
They basically told you, the build, whatever's in part of that structure, is of value to them to, to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Whether they're gonna repurpose that foundation or not is unclear at this point. I'm not, I, I don't care that they're demoing it, I don't care what you do with the contents, I don't care if you sell it on the black market, I don't care. My point to this is, we just wanna know what you're gonna do at the after this.
Whether you're gonna rebuild and put something else that, that favors the, the property, or you're going to totally, I don't care, that, that has nothing to do with the demo, though.
Just part of the delay in that is, is that we don't have our tenants lined up yet.
So you don't know what you're doing.
Repurposing will be related to the tenant-driven requests, so you might get that there'll be a temporary stabilization of that area until we know what's going forward.
That's fine.
That's fair.
That's the case, we can note that on the plan when we come in.
Right, and that way we can trace it all the way through to make sure that you've done that at, at the point in time that we close it off, and if, if you're gonna put a building back up, then you're gonna come back to us.
Come back again, precisely.
So is that, is that satisfactory?
We're going to the seventh, I just wanted to answer Joe's thing, that's it.
Okay, so what we.
We're not holding up your demo.
There's no holdup on the demo, okay, thank you.
I just have a question, uh, to you, Mr. Antonakis, about the, uh, letters you're sending out to all the abuddies, uh, has that been?
Already done.
It's already done.
Yes.
Now, I live on Fruit Street, so.
You don't live six hundred feet, then.
I'm not six hundred feet.
Guess not, but I went out pretty far.
You did go.
I, I went out.
It's gonna be six fifty-two.
I, we took, we took the assessor's map, and we, we went out three hundred feet, then we went out beyond that, 'cause we, uh, we wanted to pick up another neighborhood and, you know, I didn't.
Forgot mine.
I didn't, I mean, I mean to slide you. God, yeah, I, I really did.
I'll be on the watch anyway, you know me, right, Joe?
We had a meeting right here.
I'll be on the watch.
We had a meeting here, and it was, it was, it was a couple hours, people came in and out.
So they'll let, those letters have gone out, or?
They'll, they'll, right, yeah.
And.
Joe, you wanna keep that?
Thank you, Joe.
We're gonna have a, uh, set time for the work, work being done, uh, again, during the, uh.
That would be part of the.
Twenty-four hour operation.
I think he's trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood, in terms of the demo.
Yeah.
Just trying to be least impactive to the neighbors as possible, I think is what Babe's trying to say.
Absolutely.
Being mindful of, what is it, seven or eight?
Seven.
Seven. Seven, please don't start the equipment prior to seven.
And again, that, that'll come off the, the demo permit, and we, again, that's exactly what we talked to the residents about, and.
And using a proper, uh.
And it's, as I said, it's going to be noisy, I, you know, I don't know if you're aware what was, happened, but the prior owner, in making certain that this property would not be in competition with their other facilities, fired up the furnace to make a batch of bottles and then shut it off, and the interior of that is one solid piece of glass, they rendered it useless. And there is no heat in that building at all, no insulation, and that's part of what we're trying to get done now, to get it repurposed for warehousing, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, so motions, uh.
What is the motion?
Yeah.
Continue to the seventh?
Motion to continue to the seventh.
Okay, second by John.
Yep.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Ananamous.
Thank you all.
Okay, if you could, uh, when you come on the seventh, if you could bring, uh, some sheets like that of the plan, so.
Why don't you take these back here?
Of the whole, the entire plan, 'cause it's kinda hard for us to see.
Uh, you need like eleven by seventeen?
Eleven by seventeen's fine.
Eight and a half, yeah.
Yeah, and then have one, and then have one full size that we could pass around if we need it.
On the small printed black, it, it almost looks smudged, it's hard to.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll, we'll do them the same size as those, uh, truck turning plants.
Thank you.
Take these back if you.
I gotta recycle just like we.
Okay, the next we have is ZBA variance, twenty-five Taylor Street, want me to read the report? We're here for the fund, we're here for the fund, Joe.
The, uh, applicant requests a variance, a special permit to construct a two-family dwelling at twenty-five Taylor Street. The lot's eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight square feet in area, uh, three hundred and seventy-two square feet less than the minimum twelve thousand required in the RA zone, to even request a special permit to construct a two-family dwelling via special permit, hence the variance request. The applicant had received ZBA approvals for this project in twenty-seventeen, both, uh, the variance and the special permit. Uh, I attached the decisions in your packet, however, those approvals have since lapsed, uh, so we're looking at it all again. Uh, the proposed two-family dwelling now complies with the requirements of the previous ZBA decision, which, uh, you can see from the decision, had a number of changes they insisted on in the plan that had been submitted. So they've reworked the plan to meet the standards, uh, of the original special permit, so I'm recommending favorable for both the variance and the special permit.
So they kept us at a two-bedroom?
Yep. That's part of the, uh, the two-family standards.
What was it prior, they said they tore down, what was it?
That was the one that burnt about thirty-three times there.
And it ended up being a hundred foot long, that's as it got rebuilt, so.
It has been burnt down probably.
So this is, this is what would have been built, uh, based on the prior decision, uh, so now that we've got a. So now that we've got a plan that actually is approvable as submitted compared to what they did last time around. So I'd recommend favorable.
I, I'd recommend favorable, provided that the conditions that the ZBA imposed stay intact.
Oh, right, that's what they.
Yeah, 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 well, I.
And that, that's what the ZBA is gonna do again.
They may have forgotten what they imposed. So all I'm saying is.
That's a good point.
I, I would go along with the favorable, you know, provided the three conditions.
Yep.
As part of their decision, stay intact.
Okay.
Is that your motion, Pat?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, will you give a favorable recommendation to the zoning board with the note that we give the same conditions be put in? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous.
Larry, note my absention on the next one.
Okay.
Babe?
Yeah, I understand. Okay, next is a discussion.
Sure.
Of the Amazon site plan.
Yeah, go ahead. That's the last one.
I know.
Take it, you're here for this, Ms. Antonakis. Now, we've had several complaints almost since we've approved this about how the Amazon's contract drivers use the public ways to figure out where they're going and how they wanna repack their vans. And we'd received a letter, actually a petition with numerous signatures, which you've gotten in the email, it's in your packet. There's some attached photos. We also got an additional letter today, which I forwarded you by email, and that's also on your, on your packet, from Nova Sports on Commercial Way, the same, same kind of concerns.
To your knowledge, has anybody called the police department or any, have there been any other? I mean, as, as we've said, this board is not a policing board.
I don't, I don't know if anybody's called. I got the impression that there had been police. There had been police details that had.
They haven't sent that video back. I've had meetings with them, they haven't done anything. Joe, to answer your question, the police and, they also contacted the building department. And they also contacted Mike, the town engineer. And I know the building department have been up there, I know Mike's been up there a few times. The problem is, is they've had discussions with, I believe, the manager of the warehouse. But the manager of the warehouse seemingly changes frequently. So it goes in and out of favor, so to speak. I think that the pictures that you received today, that from Nova Sports, pretty much details the daily occurrence. And if you look at one of the pictures, they're lined up three across. We have to be mindful that industrial road is a road.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking a question with police.
The problem is, is that I think you've taken a quiet business park and now turned it into hell. I wasn't gonna say that, but okay.
Free-for-all.
And, and I think what they're looking for realistically, and I'm not gonna, I, I know Joe can speak better to it than I can. I think what they're looking for is, they prefer to see that delivery trucks stay on their own property. So that effectively, I think what they're hoping for is that the driveway gets, you know, Jersey buried up. Because if they wanna sit there and rearrange their packages, if they wanna sit there and have a conversation amongst themselves, let them do it in their own property. Let them do it in their own driveway. That way they're not, you know, they're not curtailing the, the traffic of industrial road. The other problem is, is there's a stop sign there that really and truly, for lack of better words, maybe they don't see it, but it's certainly not being adhered to. And it's just, it's to the point now that it's just becoming an unsafe road. And it's not, it's not right for the tenants who, you know, obviously are trying to survive up there. And again, I know Joe can speak to this better, but I just wanted to at least answer your question in terms of the police and who's been notified. I think the difficulty thing, and I was, been retained by one of the property owners there, is that it's our understanding that the site plan, as approved by this board, has not been properly executed. And I've spent a lot of time before this board and have great respect for it, as you know. And the one thing that I encourage all of my clients to do is to complete the task set forth on the site plan to the letter. Because that's the, that's the agreement that we make as applicants with this board. And there is a give and take. This board is receptive and cooperative to applicants, perhaps more so than in many other towns. But what, what is, what is hurtful to this board, and I think to the residents and the other taxpayers, is that when a company of this size and the magnitude of, of their resources can't simply impose the site, can't comply with the, with the site plan that you've, requirements that you've placed on them. And so to the extent that this board has some administrative authority over that site, we would ask that you exercise that jurisdiction and require the owner of the property, who is, is the person responsible for the execution of the site plan, to put it into a proper place. And while they're there, it might provide a chance to get modifications and maybe to add some conditions. I did not come here without spending a couple of mornings up there. I was up there last Friday on a clear morning and it was very, very difficult to navigate a long commercial way. Industrial drive, the speed limit is disregarded. And, you know, it's, it, it's easy to identify who the culprits are because the vehicles are primarily the same. They're small service delivery vehicles that Amazon uses. And, you know, we're all beneficiaries of Amazon's great marketing program. And we all wish them well and success. But on the other hand, there are multiple businesses up there that are also contributing to this community. And the employees are having a difficult time getting in and out of their workplaces. And it is an unsafe situation. And I was literally shocked when I went up there. I went back again on Monday, yesterday morning, which was a holiday, and it was just as bad as it always was. And I went up again later in the afternoon last Thursday. I actually gone Thursday afternoon before I went Friday morning. And the afternoon wasn't as bad, but it still is noticeable. And again, they're exiting and entering and they're just lining up and using Commercial Way as a parking lot. And it's, I, I don't think that it's fair and I don't think it's what this board intended for any applicant to be able to do to its neighbors. So we would ask that you take whatever efforts you can to make sure that that site plan has been, is properly instituted and that we get an opportunity to have a, a free exchange of information with them now that they're there and very busy. Thank you.
First of all, I think that we should have Mike and Matt go over the site, amended site plan. This is the first, I heard that the site plan wasn't completed the way it was signed. And if that is, either they be told to complete the, complete it the way it was designed or come back with an amended site plan. And if they come back with amended site plan, now we have the jurisdiction to do, to do some changes. Right now, we don't. We have, we have a signed amended site plan that we really have no jurisdiction to change. Again, I've been up there myself, looking at it and I looked the thing and I've been going through the zoning, the zoning act and the zoning bylaws to try to find some way to do it. But technically, they have the thing. So I definitely, if the, the site plan wasn't adhered to, absolutely. Now, they, they should be told, so if.
Well, I can, I can check with town council because from my understanding, the, the site plan, the, the physical changes on the ground are relatively what was approved on the site plan. But the, what was approved on the site plan was based on what was presented to you in terms of how they were gonna handle the operation.
The fact is, obviously.
And they're not doing that.
Yeah, the way this is working is not what was presented to us.
Right, so, so they aren't, they, they can't park vehicles on, on their parking lot because they're parking empty tractor-trailer trucks across all the parking spaces. So you can't use them. So no wonder they're using the old Stop and Shop Plaza for all the vans. They screwed up their own site, so they can't even use it themselves. So that just adds to the need for the van drivers to leave the site and go to the only place that works, which is the two public streets, you know, industrial road and Commercial Way. So I don't know. I, I think, I think you might have the authority to require them to close the driveway and let them keep it on their own property. If they wanna block their own property so that it can't be used, then maybe they'll figure out that they're doing something wrong.
Yeah, I think we have that, us, we have that right, only because what they told us isn't what, how that functions.
Right, so they're, they're physically preventing themselves from using the site the way they claimed they wanted it done and the way you approved it for them.
I guess my, past the point of legally being able to do that means nothing in terms of actually getting them to do that. We've had varying degrees of ability as, as you've had varying degrees of ability talking to somebody up there. I think we've had varying degrees of ability to get somebody here to discuss these issues. So, I mean, I, you know, we can look ahead and go and do that. It was one of the reasons why I, I talked about the police, only because they have the right to ticket every one of them. They're, they're parking in the middle of a, of a town-owned street.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that doesn't seem like that's worked out either.
Yeah, it is not. The time, that's the impression I've gotten, I've been down there multiple times. And they, my, my impression is they're the ones who are responsible for the police's streets. No one else can do it, but they don't seem to wanna do it.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's unfortunate. Yeah, no, obviously at certain points in time, I can understand, there may be other merchants in town, I certainly understand that. But if this is happening every day, I mean, a couple of times during the week, ticketing a few people would, would, would probably help clearing this up immensely because I don't think any of those guys are gonna be wanting to pay tickets to, to continue to do this. But, I mean, I have no problem trying to call Amazon back in here and, and, and trying to make changes to it because again, I, I believe that what, what was told to us at the public hearing is not what we're seeing, so.
I agree with you, Joe.
If we can do that, though, it'd be great, I just, you know.
Yeah, well, listen, make that a motion and then. Again, we don't want Amazon, we want the building owner.
That's what, the manager or the manager or the owner?
Building owner. That's, that's the person, the, the Amazon's only tenant.
Right.
Well, it's a property management company, so.
Bring them all.
I, I, you're right, Joe.
Bring them all.
I've been pushing this, that Stop and Shop, finally, you can drive down to the gym.
Well, that's because they're on strike.
All their right places. But it's taken much.
Wrong location, damn.
This, this is.
I know it's the wrong.
This is a business-friendly community that should not have anyone thumb its nose at.
Good point, Joe, absolutely.
Again, I, I do this in a lot of different towns. And I'm a Milfordian. And, and I, you know, so I don't, I, I'm obviously prejudiced about Milford. But I do, as I said, there is, there are very few towns where the boards are as business-friendly and as reasonable in their regulations as the town of Milford. And it's very, it, it is disheartening for all of these people, for my client, who has a very successful, two clients, a very successful business up there, that they can't get their employees in and out. And that's not right.
No, it is not. It is not right.
I, I agree a hundred percent. As I, I've been up there a number of times, I've seen it.
Bring anybody we can get, next, next meeting.
Remedy very, very easily by letting them run up that, the area along the side of the building.
Let them go in their own property.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And queue up in there. Okay, think about what we do relative to a Dunkin' Donuts and the number of, number of queuing spots that we have. Because we're mindful of what will happen if the overflow comes out onto the streets. This is, this is no different. This is people getting ready to get a product and take it someplace else while interfering with commerce there.
That's absolutely right, similar to that.
Make a motion that staff reach out to the owner of the property to, to come to either the next meeting or the meeting as soon as they can.
And the Amazon.
Well, that they reach out to, to their tenant as well. We have no legal recourse back to the tenant, but, but I, I would suggest that they reach out to their tenant as well and have them come in. But obviously, the, if we have a hook, the only hook is through the, the company that, that actually owns the property.
Yes.
Thank you.
Move, second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion?
No, four.
Do people have anything you'd like to say?
You run the shop.
My name's Jim Gallagher, I work for the business up there. Back in January, they hit one of my, they hit my truck, it was on my way to work. Only last week have I finally heard from the insurance company. After I had a friend of mine who's a lawyer send them a letter. And it's still, the truck's still not fixed.
We've also had an employee get their vehicle smashed in total in the past three months. I've been very close about two or three times in the past couple of months. And this is every day, every single morning.
Yeah, I mean. Tonight, man.
And we're, and I've been, and the last time, I've been threatened by one of their drivers, so that's why I will call the station. So if you don't want this to become more of a physical altercation situation, you, you may wanna do it sooner or later. I highly recommend that.
We do have a board of selectmen that you could talk to, to also.
I was just gonna mention that. They meet on Mondays, you should really bring yourself down there and let them know how you feel.
Yeah, but the reality of it is, I, I do believe that if they were able to be maintained on their own property and they were off commercial, wouldn't have this problem.
Right, oh, I agree with you. But in the meantime.
Because the tenants that take commercial as part of their livelihood would not be subjected to the traffic and to the getting cut off and to the rude behavior of hired drivers.
Right.
I actually think they did a dry run last week. They know something's coming. They were all lined up down the side of their building and that's how they exited. And we're like, oh, is this really happening? They cleared the street, I don't know what they were doing.
Somebody must have watched the planning board meeting on TV.
Yeah.
They did all picture, pictures of them and then they moved over there and then.
Yeah, it's dangerous, really dangerous.
We, we're very, we're very aware of it and we'd like to cure, to cure the problem, but our hands are tied in certain ways to do it.
I think, I think even the road needs to be striped. To tell you, if when you're heading in and they're coming out, they act like you're on their side of the road. You know, a yellow, a yellow line down the middle goes a long way.
Yeah, I don't know what they're telling their employees, but.
I don't know, I don't know that that would, that that would, that would change them, considering they're parking in the middle of the road to begin with.
But you know what, you know what, you get flipped off when you get told it's a one-way street. It is not a one-way street.
It's a dead-end street that's one-way, okay.
That'd be unique. As I said, we'll, we'll, we'll try to bring them in. I, I, I understand the issues you're having. I would not give up totally on the police either. And the idea of going to the selectmen to try to do that, because again, it is a town street. We don't have control over that town street. That's, that's the selectmen and the police to, to oversee it. So you certainly have a complaint backed that way too. We'll do whatever we can.
If you guys get in contact with them, could I get a car? It's impossible, I have had no luck.
With the board of selectmen or the?
For Amazon.
Oh, Amazon, I, I don't even know who the.
I don't even know who the contact.
If you guys do, can I please get in contact?
Sure.
But your best bet is the board of selectmen and the.
Well, hopefully you'll know in two weeks as to who, who shows up and whether Amazon shows up or just the, the property owner themselves. So we'll, we'll know in a couple of weeks as to what happens.
If I may, I think part of the confusion, Amazon is only allowed to come up industrial, circle their building, pull in and then come out through Commercial. And I'm, I, believe me, I am not defending them at all.
They think it's one-way.
They believe, because they were told, that's the way, in their mind, they think Commercial is one-way and hence, it's an extension of their driveway. And this is what leads to the problem. Because it's not a one-way road, as we all know.
Right.
But because that's the way that they're trained to come and leave, they just assume that they have rights of everything. And that's the problem.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other?
Yeah, Wendy's. They've, they've changed that site plan ninety-two ways and still haven't come in for an amended site plan.
Well, supposedly the agreement is when all the work is done, they're coming in for what, whatever the changes were. That's what was, that's what was told to us.
That was what we discussed.
Do you guys have any rights to shut them down until they comply, go towards according to your plan?
Who? We're talking about a different site.
As far as, as far as, as far as that, I don't believe, I don't believe, no one's indicated to us that the, the variances to the plan were anything such that, no, we don't, to be honest. You know, the easiest answer.
No, but Wendy's, the understanding of. No, but Wendy's, the understanding of the board was that there'd be a, an as-built plan filed, once, I, yeah, you may have, but-
But that was, that was-
But we did do that.
That was the agreement, or that was what was told to me, because I said, how come they didn't, I asked the question, how come they didn't come back to us before they ever did the work, and the indication was, the town engineer had gone out, had, and worked with their engineer to come up with a plan, that they would come back with an as-built, a lot of it had to do with them actually constructing it to what was originally approved, and then making some modifications to it.
And then they discovered in the process-
I seen by where the driveway is, now they were doing other work, work there, too.
Right, but in the process of, of dismantling what everybody thought was there, they discovered that they hadn't even built what was approved the first two times, which is probably why it wasn't working, that, and the fact that they, that they changed the plan, even after it might have worked, they fixed it, and they ruined it.
I wasn't aware of that, and I seen, I seen the board, you know, it'd be about half way.